Good evening, everyone. Welcome. Thank you all for coming. We really appreciate it. Okay, I'm just gonna give you a little short history of what this is all about because maybe some of you don't know or aren't sure. This is the White Community Preservation Act Committee, and we're having this presentation tonight. We have 12 proposals. We have proposed applications to us for funding. And we need the public's help to decide and help us make a decision on what, you know, you guys are interested in and to see if, you know, you can come up with something that we don't, we didn't think of, or, you know, we want your input to help us make our decision. So, the Hoya Community Preservation Act, it's not the Hoya one, it's the CPA itself, is a Massachusetts law that establishes a local community preservation fund to support open space protection, historic rehabilitation, affordable housing, and outdoor recreation in the city of Hoya. Approved by voters in 2016, funds for the program are generated through a surcharge on property tax bills. Hoya voters adopted a 1.5% surcharge. An annual dispersal from the state White Community Preservation Trust Fund, that's the two funds that we get the money from. And they distribute their funding each November to the CPA communities. The program is led by the Community Preservation Act Committee, a nine-member volunteer committee with the support of staff member, Aiden Landau-Ayden. Learn more about the committee at our website, hoyacpac.org. And I'd love to introduce the committee. I'm Lady Pluna, the chair. Mike, I'll send a chair, I mean, my chair, excuse me. We've vanished, who is our secretary, Gipoli, and Rosemary Arnold. And is any of the committee members here? No? Okay. Well, so, thank you for coming. Now, the first presentation that we're gonna have tonight is from Down Home Properties. This is Mr. John Tansy. And you are, is he gonna do anything with you?
I could do it for him. You want me to?
I can do it.
Okay. And he is part-owner and owner, or whatever, however, what you can tell him. 350 and 352 Maple Street. It's a historic rehabilitation of housing. John?
Do you want me to give us that?
Yes.
Yeah. Thanks. It's great to see a lot of people here tonight. We were a little concerned with how the weather had been, that maybe we wouldn't have much of a turnout, so it's nice to see people come taking interest in what the CPA is looking at, and I think we've got some exciting projects, and I hope mine is one of them. So, here we go. I am part-owner in 352, 356 Maple Street, which is a condominium, six units, directly across the street from the public library on Maple Street. We bought two units at tax title auction two years ago, and then a year ago, we had an opportunity to get five, four more, like, three more of the units, so we have a total of five of the six units in that property. And it was a, it was a kind of an end conversion that I think was done in the mid-1980s by Old Holyoke. And unfortunately, it was not a very successful condo project. And by the time we got two of the units in 2016, only two of the six units were occupied. So, the building was certainly in need of attention. And it was a project that, you know, it had originally been three units, and it got turned into six units, and it was not well-designed. So, they were not very desirable units. They're small units, they're a little over 600 square feet each. And I think that Catherine Lebrun and I have done a nice job at turning them into much, much more desirable units than what they were a couple of years ago. So, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna show you what our primary, I'm gonna look how to figure this out, which I think I can. As you can see, this, this is the, well, it's primarily masonry work that we wanna do. There's a lot of repointing that needs to be done on the building. We're asking for just over $17,000. And as you can see, a lot of the tuck pointing is completely missing. And this is the first floor of the bay. This is the second floor, the third floor. This is the close-up of the third floor. So, as you can see, it, all of this faces Maple Street, so it's a very visible, visible project. And our plan would be restoration of the brick facade on the front of the building, replacement of, there's a missing roof rafter, the gable end of a roof rafter, and then, of course, we would give the third floor a nice paint job. This is the neighboring building here, so our building ends right, right there. All right, now, the next slide. So, this, the next portion that I'm gonna show you cannot be seen from High Street. So, the majority of the repair can be seen from High Street. The walls of this building were built with three courses of brick, and in many places, the first exterior course is missing over half of the mortars. So, there is starting to be some problems with water infiltration, and bricks are starting to fall. So, this will show you, this actually is an interior courtyard. High Street would be over here. This is an interior courtyard between 346, 350 Maple Street and 352, 356 Maple Street. You can see that there was some tuck pointing done some years ago. It's really not historically appropriate. I think we're gonna have to leave it, but what we do up in these other areas, you can see where they stopped, we're gonna do something that will have a nicer, you know, softer look, so it blends in with the brick better. And you can see particularly in here, this is the close-up of this area here, you can see how deteriorated this is and how there's, there's some pretty serious cracking going on. Then, this is tuck pointing that would be done. This is the back porch area. This is right next to one of the entrances to one of the apartments, and you can see this is an example of horribly done tuck pointing. So, this, we would cut out and redo this, particularly because it's so visible. But you can also see here where there's actually some of the brick are missing. And then you can see this corner here, this is the corner of the building, there's hardly any mortar in those joints there. Now, I'm just gonna go through, this is one of the apartments, as I said, we own five of the six. This is, all of the five apartments that we have have been nicely rented, and I just kinda wanted to show you the quality of what we've done to the units that we own. And we, they're all fully rented, and we've been able to attract, you know, a very, very good market rate tenant. It's, it's been a very positive experience. Kitchen, bathroom, bedroom, and that's the end. I guess it's time for questions. If people have any questions, we are private. Some of the presentations you're gonna hear from are people that are either doing projects specifically for the city or whatever. This is, this would be a private investment into, or this would be a public investment into a private property. So, questions?
When were the condos built, up to a year?
The building was built in... Oh, okay. Sorry.
When were the condos built? What is a historical...
Just get your name and address.
My name is Willie Data. I live on Beach Street in Holyoke, Carolina. Also, I used to be a teacher at Apollo Fair Year Charter School.
Yeah, the building was built in the 1890s. It's part of a whole row, section of row houses that runs from Essex Street to Appleton. And some are condos, some are privately apartment buildings. They're in various states of great ownership and less great ownership, but I think for the most part, it's a section of the city that's, that's coming back. And I think particularly, this is very central to the project, the library commons project that Wayfinders is doing, which I think is a very exciting project for that neighborhood. Other questions? Go ahead. I think maybe it's best if you come up there.
My, I, my name is Braden Zikovich. I live actually in GDB. I just had a question about the project. You mentioned that part of the funds that go to paint the third floor, is that an exterior paint on the brick? Could you clarify what that's...
Sure. It's just the section here. That's all that, I thought that really made it out. Thanks. Yeah, no, we wouldn't be painting any of the brick. I, over the last two years, we've done a lot of work to the building. As a matter of fact, these porches have been redone. This actually has been painted since this picture was taken, but we redid the porches and put nice railings on and tried to make it more historically appropriate. So, this, the funding that we're requesting now is really just for the final phase of the work that needs to be done to the building.
Is there a historical aspect?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just said, so before you, sorry. Again, Willie Data, before you took on this project, was the property vacant for a while?
It wasn't fully vacant. Two of the six units were occupied.
Historical aspect, where are you in the historical aspect that you asked you on?
Well, it's, I mean, it's on the historic register.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's part of the city's historic inventory, it's historic buildings. Other questions?
Okay, thank you, John.
Thank you very much. Now I have to figure out how to unmute this thing.
Hi, this is just a little bit of housekeeping. This is a lovely hearing, so if you have any questions or comments, we'll be asking for your name and rest of your record. It's just housekeeping. To introduce the next project, which is the restoration of Victory Theater. And I would turn this over directly to Don Sanders, Mr. White.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Don Sanders. I'm the executive artistic director of MEFA, the Massachusetts International Festival of the Arts, Victory Theater. And we are the owners of the Victory Theater and engaged in bringing this fantastic 1,600-seat theater back into operation in the middle of our city and community, and not just in the middle of our city and community, but of the entire Pioneer Valley. Because this is the only theater of its kind left in our entire region. There were other theaters, there were theaters in Springfield, there were theaters in Greetham, et cetera, et cetera. The Victory, which was built in 1919, is the last surviving, what we call, a Broadway-style theater in this region. It's an extraordinary asset and jewel and an amazing, shall we say, gift that has remained here. We call it a sleeping beauty. And we would like everyone, including ourselves, to give it a kiss, to make it wake up. How many people here have been to a Broadway show in New York City? Have I seen a show of hands? Yeah. Well, here's what's really interesting about this project, and maybe the hardest to convey, is that this theater is the same kind of theater as the Broadhurst Theater, as the Plymouth, the old Plymouth Theater. Every one of those theaters in New York City is full to capacity as we speak. Tonight's Tuesday, so, Wednesday. They're, they've had a matinee, and they're full tonight. And each one of these shows, a phenomenon has happened called touring, Broadway touring, which has really taken off in the past 10 years, even more so than when we first started this project. And what that means is, a show like Beautiful or Hamilton is already on tour while it's still playing on Broadway. In fact, the latest statistics, financial statistics show that almost 75% of the financing that makes a commercial show successful is gained in the touring circuit. In order to have a touring circuit, what do you have to have? A theater that can contain it. The Victory Theater is the only facility in our entire region that could contain, when it is restored and reopened with 21st century technology, all of which is in our plan, we'll be able to house a touring series such as now. The closest you can get to that is to go to Hartford. Well, I know Hartford isn't that far away, but how great it would be to go 20 minutes from the, the statistics that show us that 20 minutes from the Victory's door are enough people in our own community and region to finance this theater and make it be a success. So, having said that, we're so excited about the CPA. I'm personally excited that the city of Holyoke has this. I think it's a tremendous, tremendous, it says something for the wisdom of the city and the desire for the city to not only retain the beautiful things that it has, but to protect them and preserve them and help them help us make this a better community. So, without further ado, I'm gonna show you some slides of the interior of the theater, because most of you may not have seen the interior, and it's very hard to understand that behind the current facade is this Broadway show. This is an architect's rendering of the restored exterior with its original 1941 blade and a new marquee. This is it lighted up at night with a lobby that goes along Suffolk Street, with people inside there buying tickets and buying coffee and bringing some concession stand. Here we are inside, and there are the famous murals on either side of the chausseum stage. Those are being restored, and they will go back on either side of the stage. Those have been part of the historic designation that the Massachusetts Historic Commission has given to the theater. Here's a view of the stage from people sitting in the orchestra. Also, you can see the murals. And here is, that's the size of that theater. That, those, that's the audience looking at something on the stage. So, you can see, this is a real theater, and it's right here in our community. And here's an example of some of the kinds of shows that can be in this theater. Emily Man has worked on making this happen, so let's, uh...
Sorry, the PC's not reading our back.
Oh, okay. Does that mean we can't show it? Okay.
In the meantime...
In the meantime...
Why don't you tell us what you're, exactly what you're looking for the funding?
Yes. So, we have funding for this project. It's from a variety of sources, from the state of Massachusetts, from the city of Holyoke, other than the CPA program. We have private individuals, corporations, and foundations that have, to this date, brought us 75% of the cost necessary to open this theater. We have so much enthusiasm, and we really want to have the CPA be a part of this project and be, get on board and bring the mission statement of the CPA to this fantastic structure in Holyoke, which quite a number of people have worked very hard to secure and make sure that it is there, so it can be the asset to the community that we know it can be. I wanna give you some statistics on what, when the theater's open while we're waiting to see, of what this will bring to the community. So, the patrons to the theater, it's estimated, will spend $3,310,470 a year buying tickets and coming to this theater. And remember, the theater will house Broadway shows, community productions, it will be an education facility, it is going to be the central core for a training program for young people in high school and community college aged in every aspect of the really high-paying jobs in the entertainment industry. That's backstage jobs such as lighting, sound, box office, all-stage management. It's an extraordinary, extraordinary project, and it's very important, I think, that we in the community understand the scale of this project. MEFA is a 501(c)(3), we're a not-for-profit, but this is an economic development project for the city. So, although, yes, it's gonna be wonderful to go to the theater, to hear opera, to see dance, to have music tribute shows, et cetera, it's also going to generate a tremendous income for the, the city and for the region right around the theater. You have ideas that it will stimulate restaurants, et cetera, and the kind of thing that you see happening wherever there are theaters. So, in line with that, the estimate is that 101 jobs will be generated in Holyoke, and there will be nine, almost 10 additional jobs in the greater Holyoke area. So, it's important to realize that this project, that I'd love you to get behind and be enthusiastic about and excited about, as I am, is also a business. It's a business that does good, and I'm celebrating my 51st year in the professional theater, and I can say, even see some of the not-as-wonderful side of show business, that show business is a good business, and it's a good business for this community with our tremendous opening to the education industry that surrounds us. There are 100,000 students within the 50-mile radius of where we're sitting right now, and we, and our business plan shows that there are enough people to run this business plan. So, are we ready, Emily, to go back into the... Okay. Well, could you get into someone's hotspot or no?
Possibly, I don't know if I'd ask you there to ask for it. It's not even showing up. It depends on an internet connection. They did warn us that, and I mentioned that there's not a reliable Wi-Fi.
I have to say, this is why I like live theater. I have never seen, yeah, yes, yes. So, we are specifically interested in the CPA funding a, the interior aspects of restoration inside the theater. The murals, which you saw, the seats, there were, these 1,500 seats have to be upholstered and restored. They're going to go back, or they're going to be replaced. And we have a very exciting interior plan that can be supported as well. And at the meeting that we went to at City Hall, we have said to the commission that we will be looking at one of those projects that we will give a very specific cost to and ask for support for that project over a three-year period. We're asking for a total of $300,000 over three years. So, that can translate to $100,000 a year, and, or could be broken down, given the nature of how the timetable for the particular restoration part fits in with the overall architectural and construction project. We are aiming to go into construction in July for 18 months of construction, and we're aiming at a 100th birthday anniversary for the theater on December 31st, 2020.
Is that $300,000 our total budget? Willie Data, is that $300,000 your total budget over three years?
Total budget for the whole theater restoration is, is $46 million. Yes, yes. Of which, there's, I mean, 75%. Yeah, of which the $300,000 would be a part of that budget. And there is a, in that $46 million is a five-year sustainability budget for once the theater opens, so it's a, it's a very smart business plan. Other questions?
You said you projected revenue once it's fully, fully ready to go. How much?
Approximately $3,300,000, and we expect about 70,000 ticket buyers in the course of the year.
And you're looking for shows, Broadway shows to, to Holyoke in production companies, correct?
Yes. So, the business plan calls for six, call it six to eight Broadway touring shows, but then what we call festival programming, which would be opera, theater, dance, and musical tributes, a whole variety of very attractive community events. So, it will be a very, it's a, it's a center for the community in every way and on every possible level.
There's one more.
I think there's a...
Just one little bit.
All right.
Since Holyoke, the population's Latino, are there any Latino shows?
MEFA, which has been in business for almost 25 years, we have brought Tito Fuentes twice to Holyoke, Bela, E. Paul Muri, Piltope Ruiz, and we have, we're very proud that part of our business plan is to support and mentoring of Palante Theater, which is the establishment of the Latinx theater in the community, and we have put on two shows in that context, and there'll be another one coming up called Not For Sale from the Urban Theater of Chicago. So, we, we are very, 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 very strongly dedicated to the Latino population.
Hi, Nancy Howard, West Street, Holyoke. At one point, you were talking about having the capability to show film. Is that still in the plan?
Yes, it is. Incorporated in that $46 million is the movie showing capability. So, for example, if we wanted to do a designated film festival, or special films, or a project that's very dear to our hearts, which is cartoons on Saturday morning, that's for our local kids and grown-ups, we can do that. We will not be looking at programming a commercial movie house. There are too many problems with that. I was on the board at an hour cinema for 10 years, and it's very, it's hard for us as laypeople to understand that in order to have a movie theater, that's all you can do, because you are subject to the distribution of these shows that win the Academy Awards, and you can't fit in then live programming. Our programming will be dear to what the area doesn't have, which is live performance. Again, Broadway shows, dance, music, et cetera. But we will have the capacity to show films thoroughly.
Have you recruited MGM, though? Because they would be an obvious partner for this.
We have. And in fact, I have to say, one of the most exciting moments of this project, and lots of exciting moments, was when we had an open house, actually, almost a year ago, last April. And in addition to other people who came, including Mayor, Marcos, et cetera, the folks from MGM came, it was the first time they saw this theater. And Talia, who runs the program for MGM, she said that, "I refuse the expletive." But she said it. She said, "Holy, if I had a theater..." But she said it, she said, "Polio, if I had a theater like this, I could program anything in the world." And then we started talking about the ease of having people who come to MGM take a shuttle up to a shuttle in Polio, come in. So yes, we have, and we would like to have their participation.
Yeah, John Jansen, locals too. I just am curious, the building still appears to be in pretty distressed condition and clearly roofs are always the biggest challenge with dealing with a distressed building. Has there been any remediation to this point, to, while you're awaiting your final financing?
One of the hardest things to realize about this project, which is funded so much by historic tax records, and I won't go into the details of that, but it's something that can't be done incrementally. It all starts, I'm going to say, on July 1st, okay, and goes through. You can't go in and get a group and say, "We're going to paint this, touch up this side," et cetera, et cetera. The interior, the, the structure of the building is in excellent condition. The interior plaster work and the kind of stuff that falls down when there's leaking, et cetera, is in terrible shape. And that's, it's been cleaned up as much as we can and the roof is the hurricane problem because we found out that there were interior gutters, but the roof has actually been repaired to stay within the amount of money that can be spent and is worth spending on it enough to keep it there so that when the whole big thing starts, you know, it'll all happen. So yes, there has been the kind of remediation that, that keeps it poised to get rebuilt. Well, it's a great little film, so it'll just be another chance we'll have, we'll have a chance to show it in some time, hopefully. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Valley Opportunity Council here is here to talk about the project Voces de Esperanza. Esperanza, which is at 348 Chestnut Street. Okay, thank you.
So good evening, my name is Steve Huntley, I'm the Executive Director of Valley Opportunity Council and at the helm of the computer is Alex Jansen, Director of Operations at VOC. We're here to talk a little bit about Voces de Esperanza. We've applied for CPA money in two different applications and we'll go through why and how that all is working in a few minutes. But first off, let's give you a few blurb about VOC. We're a community action agency in Hollywood, Chico, we offer services throughout Hennepin County. We touch the legs of between 50,000 and 60,000 people a year. So we're all over the place in a lot of different ways, helping a lot of different people. Voces de Esperanza, the history of that is, it was redeveloped by Carlos Vega about 28, 29 years ago. It was redeveloped on a shoestring, as many developments in those days were. They didn't take a dime of developer fees or anything of that nature because they didn't have the money for it. And the New Wave Esperanza was more focused on helping the tenants in that than themselves, almost to a fault, frankly. But, so they, they redeveloped it, there was, there were some deficiencies, there were some things that were done, that were done quick, that were done dirty, that weren't done great. So two years ago, we took over ownership of the property and now we're coming forward with a tax credit application. So we have done the tax, or we're about to do the tax credit application next fall, we hope. And the reason we weren't invited in this round for a tax credit application was because we did not have any local resources in it for the year. So that's why we're here at the CPA, asking for local resources. This will leverage a substantial amount of money. So quickly, this is, this is 348 Chestnut Street, 4852 Franklin Street. So this is right up against the Hope 6. It's in the Hope 6 Historical District. We brought a lady, so we might as well use it, right? So obviously, this is a very beautiful building, it's very historic, it's, it's designed by a famed architect, et cetera, et cetera. However, if you, if you look closer at it, there's some brick work that needs repair. There's some other work that needs to be done, but really for the CPA application, we're really focused on the deficiencies in the brick. You can see how the water's penetrated there and how there was some patching done here and there and it's, you know, not holding up great and there's other things. So our application for this property is $50,000 and the intention is to repoint the bricks so the bricks will stay where they are for the next 100 years. Included in this larger project that we're applying for the Federal Resource Forum is also 337 Chestnut Street. Now this is, these townhomes that are right here, these were brand-new built about 28 years ago, again, by New Wave Esperanza, all part of a larger project, but these are hardly historic. They're really attractive, they're terrific units, they have a nice front yard, there's a backyard that these, these townhomes have, really, really nice units. And there's some deficiencies. The deficiency that we're looking at here in particular is the ephesus or stucco. You can see where water has infiltrated and damaged the ephesus. Now we found this out the hard way because when we took over ownership, one of the tenants was complaining about interior rock. So we, they started investigating, actually it was the proof that managed it before we took over. They started investigating and found out that the ephesus, water had come in, there was rock inside the building, so that was all repaired in that area. And then as we're looking at it and talking about it, it was pretty clear that there was plenty of other places where water's coming in. I mean, they're, they're pretty obvious in these pictures. So, at the end of the day, the idea will be to remove all of this ephesus and replace it with a new ephesus that's more appropriate to our climate. This, we're told, what they did in the, 28 years ago, may not have been exactly right for the New England winters and change in temperatures, what was it, minus 18 and then 60 degrees five days later or something. It's not designed for that sort of change. So right here shows, this is the area that we redid, that has been redone, and then this is the balance of it right here. So the hope is that we will use a portion of the, we'll use the CPA funds to fund a portion of redoing that. We may look at mirroring the Hope 6 volume siding, we may look at stucco. We have a lot of options we want to work through and think about what will fit best in the neighborhood. We certainly don't want to look like we're trying to copycat the Hope 6, however, that's probably 18, 15 to 18 years age and it's standing up beautifully. This is 28 years age and it needs to be redone. So we just want to find something that's durable, low maintenance, that will last our lifetimes. Thank you.
Yeah, John Jansen, I, I think it would be useful to say something to folks about Hope 6 because I think Hope 6 was kind of an exciting project that the feds did and I think it might be worthwhile for people to know a little bit about, about.
Okay, so we didn't develop Hope 6, so the housing authority did. However, we're neighbors and we actually jointly built the building within the Hope 6 project. But the Hope 6 was, and I can't think of the number off the top of my head, I'll apologize, but it was north of $100 million invested in the community where some really dilated properties were removed, redeveloped, and affordable housing was built by the housing authority. This was done ahead of that, this was done about 10 years before the, did that, yeah, is that?
Is Hope 6 a homeownership or no?
It's half and half, it's half and half, yeah, there is some homeownership, there is some rental. I think it's about 330 units full, does that sound right? God, I'm going off of like 15-year-old memory, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much, Steve.
Thank you all.
Sorry about that noise. Okay, the next project to come up is going to be the Polio Boys and Girls Club and they are going to do a project which is a playground. So I need to.
Thank you very much, Elaine. My name is Adam Haplon, I'm the Executive Director of the Boys and Girls Club of Greater Polio and I want to thank very much the committee for inviting us tonight and I want to thank you all as a public and residents of Polio for coming out to hear what our proposed plan is. Especially want to give a great big shout-out to a lot of supporters of the club here and specifically there's some groups of people that would not only support the club and have supported the club over the years, but would take direct advantage of a park renovation like this, so I really appreciate you guys being here, thank you very much. I also want to be mindful of the fact that, you know, our organization, our mission statement is to work with youth, especially those who need us most, to create responsible care and contributing members of their, of their community. And we certainly do that one youth at a time through priority area outcomes of academic success, healthy lifestyle and good character and citizenship. And we have some young people actually here in the room tonight for the first time being involved in city government, so I want to give a shout-out to our Keystone group who all the way they may not be property owners in Polio currently right now, they certainly will be in the future, and I think it's really important that we're teaching them the meaning of being a good citizen, so thank you very much. So I'd love to take a few minutes, an opportunity here of my time to just educate you on what the club has been about and what it's been doing. So for 126 years, we have been an institution in this community and how about, we only had two locations in Polio. Our original location started in 1892 on Race Street and then in 1969, we moved two blocks up to Midcosmos Way, formerly known as Baum Street. We're located one block down from the Polio Police Department, one block down from the Fire Department and near City Hall, even had Heritage Day Park. But one thing I think it's really mindful to know is that our organization and our Board of Directors over the years has been very committed to downtown Polio. There's no question that we've had opportunities to move other places that have been committed to the space and the location, knowing that this is where we're going to be able to serve the youth that need us most. So with that, not only do we have our location at 700 Cosmos Way, but we also partner with the Polio Housing Authority and offer after-school programming in four housing communities of Tupper, Ryan, Churchill and Boden. And so that gives us an opportunity to do even further outreach to youth who truly need us most, those that are living in public housing, bringing after-school and enrichment opportunities to those kids in the neighborhoods in which they live in. So we're certainly proud of the impact that we've had on the community. So just to give you an idea of who we are, like I said, we're operating five sites in Polio. We are a large program, there's no question about it. In the course of the year, we will see almost 3,500 youth come through our doors in some capacity or another. On a daily basis, we're serving in excess of 300 youth a day between our five sites. So we have a very large impact and a good footprint in this community, to say the least. Demographics clearly are showing that we are serving youth who need opportunities to interact with caring adults. Cornerstone of our program is mentoring, making sure the kids have access to enrichment opportunities and are engaged and motivate them in their learnings, making sure that they have access to career and college opportunities as well. So what we did was propose, you know, and I just also wanted to legitimize the work that we do in the community and let you know that we're on an annual basis going back to our community, going back to our clients, our participants, our youth members and asking their direct input on how we create our programs and services. And so giving us back information that feeds a continuous improvement model for us. And so really proud to, to say that last year, 98% of the youth that come into the club and take advantage of our programs and services expect to graduate from high school and go on to some kind of either secondary, post-secondary education or a career. That's a pretty good statistic for Polio, considering our graduation rate is having been about 60%. I also would like to share that in terms of good citizen and character, good character and citizenship, 71% of our club team members report that they did not get into any fights this year. And that is an incredibly important statistic, considering 29% of high school youth in Polio were involved in a fight last year. So these statistics are showing that our impact, then kids coming into the club and interacting with caring adults, engaging in enriching opportunities are having a direct impact on not only their personal, how they're carrying out their personal lives, but on our overall community. So we came to CPA the proposal to do what we're calling a multi-purpose park renovation. So we are fortunate enough to own the parcel of land that is directly located right across the street from our club at 700 Cosmos Way. It currently sits as what we do consider a multi-purpose park. Back in 1995, so 25 years ago, there were some renovations that were done to the space in which we were able to create a basketball court. It has a full basketball court, concrete basketball court, and then two half courts as well, so it's an awful lot of concrete. And then the second half of the park is consists of some outdated play structures. So unfortunately, we have not had resources to really update the park in the 25 years. So there's no question that it's taken a lot for us to maintain the five sites already in Polio, to serve the number of youth that we do, and so, and still be able to maintain our own facility. So the park, the park has certainly been something that has been on our radar, but we just haven't been able to find resources to do. So we thought to CPA as an opportunity to do that. So what we're looking to do is take this 27,000 square foot piece of land, a little under, excuse me, a little over 0.6 acres of land and repurpose it so that we're able to create some green infrastructure. We'd love to have some green out there, we have actually no lawn, and if you look around in downtown, there's very little green happening. We also would love to be able to create some kind of shade capacity. What we're hearing from our kids and what you'll be hearing from our kids directly, because we do have, we have a short video, is that there is no shade. And so we use this space every single day, weather permitting, and certainly during the summer, every day, 150 to 200 kids are out on this space. And so some kind of shade capacity would be really great. But I'm going to leave it actually because the kids are going to tell you directly what they think. I do want to recognize Tom and Ben, our Director of Program Development, and I apologize for not introducing them earlier. All right, so as Dawn can attest, as long as we put the quality of the special video, right, so we were smart enough to bring the jump drive, but not smart enough to think about speakers. So I do apologize to that this time.
What if you held the mic up to the speaker?
I, I, just an idea. I'll let you go and try again. Thank you.
Well, maybe change the media better.
That's good.
Uh, we could add that we're ready to buy, uh, like, the, 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 the , like, the, the, and, 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 I, I apologize, I don't mean to waste time and I know it's not the clearest of, and like I said.
All right, if not, I'm going to encourage you to go to our Facebook page because it is posted on that, we'd love some viewers, so. Polio Voice Club, um, in the meantime, I think that's just words. Thank you. So the reality is the space is used, it will continue to get used. We are looking for CPA funding to renovate 27,000 square feet. Like I said, we're going to, the intent is to redesign the basketball court in which we would repave the court and then instead of the two half basketball courts, we are proposing to create a lawn space with a shade component, some kind of shade component. And then instead of the two half basketball courts, we are proposing to create a lawn space with a shade component, some kind of shade component. And that would be an incredibly visible change to a block of downtown Hoyop. The playground structure, we are looking to actually, so this would be where we would go down to one full basketball court, repaint it, go down to one full basketball court and create the other half as a green, green structure, lawn capacity of some sort, where the kids can actually play ball outside and soccer and things like that. So what you're seeing is the condition of the current court. With some gray. So the total budget we are asking for is $359,689. The total budget for the project is $359,689. And it'll take us from corner to corner and literally renovate two city blocks on Newton Street and the bottom of Mid-Cosmos Way. So between the basketball courts and the green infrastructure, the second portion of the park we are looking to renovate, creating seating, whether it would be walking paths, walls with landscaping, that would upgrade all of our play structures, which have so many kind of upgrades. If you don't mind bearing with us, it's really great to hear from the kids directly.
We can add cordages to the slide, like, you know, everything to the slide or something else, like to do.
Sorry.
Feast or famine.
Yeah, seriously. We are a professional outfit, I swear.
Like the jungle gym, but.
You gotta turn it down through the.
I said, rest.
I'm glad I'm not the only one.
What would we change to make it better?
We can add cordages to the slide, like, like replacements of like, you know, it's like, to do, like a jungle gym, but. And the monkey bars, like, they could stay the same, but they can add some friction to them.
This would be like a room where if you get hot, you can go in the shade in that room, and you can cool down with like, dust, dirty water.
What would we change to make the park better?
We could like add more sleeves, or like, more like slides, because that's what people mostly do. And like, fix, fix like the basketball hoop, the two basketball, two, like, the main court.
What I don't like about the class is that, the slide is like short, and I want to make it like longer, before.
Let's talk about the outside, very outside.
It's hot, boring, noisy, and it's just got right up soon.
Do you guys can make any changes to this court? What would you guys do?
Fix the hoop to the seat, fix the line.
What else? Like, drink, anything? What would you want out here?
All right, so that's it. That's our video. And I appreciate your patience in showing it, but like I said, it is always so good to hear directly from, most likely, the clients that are going to take advantage of it most. So I think just, you know, two points to take away. One is we're proposing to create green space in downtown Hoyop, which I think is huge. And so as a resident of Hoyop, somebody who's committed their life professionally and personally to the city, I feel like creating more opportunity for young people in downtown Hoyop, creating more green space, beautifying projects is really, really, should be a priority. And then the second thing I'd like you to take away from is that this area, this park, will be utilized immediately by a minimum of up to 3,000 youth in the city of Hoyop, all residents of Hoyop. That's the, that's the impact. That's the breadth of our programming. And so I think it's just really worthy to state that. Not to mention, it will also be kind of one of the only complete park renovations in downtown Hoyop, which I think is worth mentioning too. Please, yeah. So this is our proposed site plan. So what we would like to be doing is resurfacing and creating a brand-new basketball court, which gets an awful lot of use, even in its current condition. Kids are playing basketball all year long, every day. This would be where the current, the two half courts are now. What we're proposing is to pull up that concrete and actually plant grass with an irrigation system so that, of course, it can remain green all year long. We are also proposing some kind of shade structure, a pergola of some sort, so that we could have a room that we go into to get shade, which I love that comments from the kid, "I need a room." And this is currently where our play structure stands now. What we are proposing is to create walking paths. And these are actually what we're referring to as sitting walls that are landscaped. So there's opportunity for kids and parents and families to sit and watch. Right now, we have no seating outside of a couple chain benches. And so we're trying to think creatively about creating more seating spaces so that this can become a real family space for our neighbors and residents of downtown. And then, of course, upgrading all the play structures to kind of 21st century play structures, which could be fabulous. And then also making sure that we're mindful of the landscape and creating even more natural shade with trees, foreground mature trees, and really just beautifying the entire project. And I think it's, like I said, worth mentioning, it's 27,000 square feet, so it's a good piece of land, there's no question. And it actually almost entails two city blocks. Is there any questions? Please.
My name is Pedro Colom. I'm a service technician for the Hoagard Gas Electric. I also own a property right on Newton Street. My question would be definitely in the middle of the room. That lot on Newton Street up on top, does that belong to the Hoyop Boys and Girls Club?
It does not belong to the Hoyop Boys and Girls Club. It does not currently. It is, I believe, shitty old still.
But my question was, would that be added on to the plan of the player?
So I will be honest with you.
Should Kobe use the mic?
I apologize. I have a really loud voice. I'll be mad. I will be honest with you. Thank you, Pedro, for your comment, by the way. That is not something we have not thought of. For the purposes of this application, though, I have to be honest with you, the turnaround was fairly quick. And we really thought that we would have a hard time, you know, kind of necessary, like having the necessary conversation to see what that is like. You know, one of the renderings that we had done would be creating stairs down and then, you know, beautifying this with some landscaping, a couple park benches and things like that. So it's certainly not out of question. We just, we don't own the property. And like I said, for the purposes of timing for this in particular, it could be certainly something that we could look at in the future, there's no question about that. Which would then create a direct path from Newton Street. For those of you who are familiar with it, there's a lot of kids that live on Newton Street, a lot of families that live on Newton Street that would have direct access and not necessarily have to walk around the fencing.
Willie Gago, Beach Street. I'm just, how often are the kids there after dark? And what's the lighting design for future renovations?
Thank you for your question. So we currently do have the space lit. And our, like, an automatic timer with gas and electric, I think might go up to 10:00 PM. And so I will be honest with you. We currently are operating program until 9:00 PM, three to four nights a week. And so the other three nights, the park is left open for public, neighborhood, and public use. It is fenced and have the capability, but we found that the reality is that we really want the neighborhood to use our space. We want them to know that we want to be part of the neighborhood as well. So with that, the renovation would include lighting so that kids could play evening basketball, there's no question. We want to take advantage of that as well. So not only the neighborhood kids, but Boys and Girls Programming would want to have evening basketball, especially during the summer months. And it would be something that we would be able to control as an organization. But safety is our number one priority, so making sure that it is well-lit is going to be very important for us.
Hi, I'm Elaine Lando, I'm the CPA Project Manager. I just had a question about, I think, the center, the center structure you referred to of pergola. And I'm just wondering, it would be sort of like semi-open air, right? Like, sort of sheltered.
Yeah, yeah, no, yeah, no. Because they use this term room, I would not necessarily, I'm going to say that it's some kind of open-air shade structure, absolutely. But not temporary.
But with the full roof.
With the full roof, yeah, is what I envision. We haven't like totally worked out all of the detail, but open on the side. I mean, similar to what you would see, there's many parks that have shade structures. So it would be some kind of shade structure, is how I would like to refer to it now, until things get worse on the list. But not temporary, because I know that's something that CPA will support. Are there any other questions?
My name is Victor Yon with the Hoyop Public Schools. And I run Opportunity Academy, which is a program, it's a new program part of Hoyop High School. And my address is 355 Rocky Hill Road in Florence. The address of the school is on Maple Street, 416, Mr. and Mrs. Payette, that's it. So I just want to be highly in favor of this project. And we at Opportunity Academy, we serve the students who are not making it at Hoyop High or D. Students who've dropped out, Virg is dropping out. Good news, I mean, as I said, the graduation rate hovering around 60%. It actually is going to crack 7% when the final, final numbers are released for last year. We did increase to 10% the last two years, cut the drop off rate from 10% to 5%. Much of that is because of the creation of Opportunity Academy, students writing, helped drive. We are partnering now with the Boys and Girls Club to have our students be able to earn high school credit through the courses, the programming that they have there. It is very much a year of programming that is available in high schools, but that for the students who we serve, they're not, they can't take it at a large high school, it would be different. We also know we need year-round programming for our high school students. There is nothing harder to get than a basketball court for high school students. If we didn't have an outdoor basketball court, I know that by the time we hit May of whatever this is built, Connor and I would be having a whole basketball league built out for students that never had access to that stuff. And so I really, this would make a huge difference, not just to the young students who use it, the playground instructors, but for the high school students who are wayward in their teenage years.
Thank you. I appreciate that comment. And I think it is worth stating that we are looking to create like a multi-age, multi-purpose park. You know, our age group is five to 18 years old, so we really don't gamble. So we're not looking to focus in on any one age group in particular. And can't stress enough, and I appreciate Connor's basketball court, because it is by far kind of the most important, one of the most important program states is down at the Boys and Girls Club, both our indoor and outdoor. So are there any other questions?
So I see the basketball courts, I'm just, not to, you know, what about the females? I mean, not that all of them play basketball, but do you have to offer first female?
We are an all-inclusive organization, there's no question. Back in 1992, we changed our charter to include females. It is an important priority of ours, there's no question. And to be honest with you, our demographics, we hover at about almost 50/50, believe it or not, in the number of females we serve to males. But, oh, they actually left, but I, we had two young, oh, and I actually have two, our keystone, Jenny Morgan here, in terms of females, but we also have two young basketball players, female basketball players, who are around our court, in our space, using it. I know, for example, Paper City Basketball is here tonight with us. Their priority is not only male basketball, there's no question about it. So we are looking to do all-inclusive programming, because we're a youth organization and we're going to serve all types of youth. The outdoor space, like, you know, the shade component and the play structure, it's going to be a lot, I think, a lot of opportunity. Any other questions? Comments? I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you very, very much. Thank you to the committee.
I see that there's two more committee members that have joined us, Mike Sullivan, who's a senior consultant, our CPA board, and also Marcos Presenti. You guys want to stand up and raise, so you don't know. Yeah, on this table, we have two over there. Okay, so I believe Marcos, you are up next. This is Marcos Marrero, and he is the Director, Special Product Director. You are the Director of the Hoyop Economic and Redevelopment. I don't know what to call them, is Hoyop Economic and Development? Hoyop, Hoyop Economic and Development Department. But he is here tonight on behalf of the city to talk about the next three projects, which are the, let's see, what we have here? We have the Richardson train station, the 123 Pine Street, and the Armory. And so I hope it won't be too long before we're, because it's getting late and we need to move along. And so don't be discouraged because of these projects, just hang in there.
I'm the last committee member there. I will be quick. I'm Marcos Mahado, Director of Planning and Analysis for the City of Hoyop. As Director, we also staff the Hoyop Redevelopment Authority, which is the applicant for these projects. What is a redevelopment authority? It is a public corporation that is created primarily to be able to do things that municipal corporations, i.e. the city, cannot directly or easily do, such as negotiate directly with developers, it can do it with much more ease, it can accumulate land much easier, and it could dedicate other resources to a development deal. And that is what we are seeking to do with these three properties, to the, well, to your left, the Hoyop Arboretum, right behind the screen, sorry if I took down this video. 123 Penn Street, which is almost at the intersection of White Street. And the HH Richardson-designed train station is the first passenger train station in the city. Not the first train station, but the first full-passenger train station in the city. And the reason why we applied for these three, for developer incentives, because they are at the top, at the top of the priority for the Hoyop Historical Commission, partly because of age, partly because of aesthetic. The train station has a more historical importance. It's a place where a lot of French-Chapelle migrants into New England and Hoyop specifically. All three properties require a significant amount of investment and have been on the market for a long time. And this brings me to this slide. This will be the most important slide in my presentation, and I'll leave you with that. Because in large part, it explains a lot of what we do in the office of planning and development. And it's, I tried to break it down into a simple graphic. Rehab of old buildings that are in really bad shape costs a lot of money. And in a weak real estate market, you will, you can project that the income that you will get either from a resale or from renting for whatever use, residential or commercial, and it falls somewhere short of recuperating your costs. So it doesn't work. That's why you see so many buildings that year after year remain vacant despite whatever marketing you may have. So while in a normal scenario, you can conceive of, or you do something, you take something, you take profit, really, where you find yourself in many weak markets, Hoyop is not unique to this, is some type of loss that doesn't make it properly feasible. This is where we live, not really, like, this is where we work Monday to Friday, and until weekend. How do we half that box of loss? And that's where tax credits come in, not just local tax credits, but state tax credits or federal tax credit that can be monetized. That's where infrastructure dollars go in to make it more palatable and maybe increase the income possibilities of a property. And that's where the developer incentive comes in as well. What we're looking to do is aggregate the incentive, not to immediately spend it, but to add it on as a plus for these properties to get a developer and rehab them in a historically significant way. In the Armory specifically, we're not aggregating any more money immediately. What we're trying to do is dedicate the money for pre-development. There, we have an option agreement with One Hoyop Development. They are interested in doing senior loans housing at this location. They are interested in doing a senior housing at this location, which is pretty appropriate, right next to the senior center. But there is a lot of work that needs to be done in terms of pre-development. That is architectural, design, engineering study of the building. You may have noticed that part, the back part of the building fell down. So there is engineering study that has to be done to make sure how to most appropriately, you know, connect the floor joists to the wall, for example. Some of them have got out of place. Market study, making sure that there is complete performance, how to finance that redevelopment, which would be in the multiple millions of dollars. 123 Pine Street is about, I want to say, just over 10,000 square feet, it has four floors. It could fit eight good-sized units, four giant units of housing, or anywhere in between. We're also aggregating the land right next to it. We're close to buying this small parcel next to it. And the corner part, where there is a community garden, we're working with NASA prices to relocate that. And that will provide the full amenity for greenery, parking, and access to the building to have a gateway effect. But again, it is at least a $1 million project, and we're looking to supplement that with the developer incentive. And finally, the Richardson train station, that one is also likely a multimillion dollar project. Our initial estimates were based on similar developments on a similar size and condition. However, the roof alone, in the historic standards, we only have one quote. The roof alone in the historic standards could, that alone could be a million dollars, given this slate. So that is the overview of what we're trying to do. We're not trying to take the money and spend it immediately, as we've had conversations with the CPA committee. We understand that, to an extent, it is speculative, as every real estate development marketing is until you have a developer. But we're looking to not spend it in order to, if we cannot secure someone in a timeframe, the community doesn't lose that money. It allows us to secure someone, if we don't, it goes back to the hot, no harm, no foul, and you could spend on something else, or on something like this in the future. So if you have questions?
So the train station, what type of client would go in there? Or is it just for historical?
Well, we're not paying a specific use to any of them. 123 Pine is, it just doesn't lend itself for much of anything else. It's in a pretty residential neighborhood, a pretty residential corridor. The way it's built, it doesn't lend itself for, you would have to really alter its facade and its architecture, and that would be anything that we would store preservation of. The train station is definitely not gonna be a train station. And so the reuse of it, there could be multiple types of reuse. So we're not restricting it, but most likely, it would be some sort of institutional commercial use, which would be more, and you could put housing there. But there's an argument to be made that, you know, people don't like living right next to a rail line. It wouldn't be the only unit, right? There are some units that are right next to a rail line that are fantastic.
I saw your profit at that. So are you choosing for more commercial, sorry? Are you choosing for more commercial use or residential use? Like you said, there's no use to the train station, it's just gonna become a facility. And this slate roof, is that a complete rip and you've done, or is it partial, or can you save some of it?
Yeah, so the profit graphic wasn't, like, wasn't our projected profit, is that right? You expect probably a point. I assume that the train station will be commercial. We're not restricting it only to commercial. Tell them I have to come in there and say, we're gonna make, you know, four fabulous residential units. That would be something they would consider. 123 Pine is just more apt to be residential. And so it would most likely be that. And then the Armory, it would be residential in the sense that we have a partner that's looking at it to be residential at this moment in time. You asked another question, and I think I didn't address it. The roof, it's only one quote, so I wouldn't be able to tell you if they're, you know, it would probably be cheaper, particularly when you do it all in. So the Holyoke Gas and Electric that owns the facility, they got a quote from a roofer. But if you're doing the roof as part of a bigger development project, you will get some sort of economies to scale, right? You don't have to do bonding for two different projects. You don't have to get permanent, you don't have to, for two different projects. Yeah, so there may be a slight discount there. We haven't explored it in detail, but...
Yeah, John, you know, the roof thing is a huge problem for the train station. Every time I drive by that building, it makes me crazy that there's a hole in the roof. I get that the city doesn't have the money to fix the hole in the roof, even to patch the hole in the roof, I assume, which seems a little unusual to me, that they can't figure out some way to at least patch it. But what worries me about the, using CPA for this, and I hope you get it, but what worries me is the restrictions that would be put on the building. For example, it would be a much less expensive roof, and you could get some great-looking, slate-look roofs. I don't know if the tax credits that someone would want to use or whatever, if they will allow for that. But, I mean, you know, it never ceases to amaze me how expensive these projects end up getting. You know, when I see apartments that are costing $250,000 and more per unit, and, you know, a roof on a building costing a million dollars, it's not that huge a building. As a person that does, you know, a little bit of development, it blows my mind that it's that expensive when I manage to do a pretty good job at about $50 a square foot, which, you know, I don't know what to say about that. But I guess I am concerned about the lack of ability to even minimally patch the roof on the train station. And it would be great if I could hear a little something about what the city might be thinking about doing in that need on that.
So while the roof being patched, we had a conversation with the CPA committee that late January at this point. So the Holyoke Gas and Electric owns the facility. They, there's no water getting into the roof, as they would say. So the roof is patched. On the outside, it may not look it, you know, there may be pieces of slate missing, but there are no holes where rainwater is coming in, because that's how structures start, period. So, yeah, there's definitely an impression from the outside, but that's, it's dry inside. They do heat it, they keep it at a minimum heat, right? They're not like cranking it up, but I think it was like 42 degrees or something, was that? 45, 50 degrees. I can't see the moisture, it's 50 degrees inside. So that, right, yeah, it's a, it's warm on that side. Yeah, and in terms of the cost of store re-qualification, yeah, of course, there are trade-offs. And so an award by CPA doesn't immediately restrict the historic, the development to the standard. It restricts the standard as soon as the developer accepts it, right? So remember, this is a proposal without, I don't have a developer for it on the back, because it meant to be intense, say, hey, there's $150,000 here, to do this to historic standard. So if there are no takers, no harm no foul. Now, there is a trade-off, right? Well, you can do it at a slower cost, but some of these structures, the big attractiveness of it is its historic nature. So, you know, sometimes it's just other, go big or go home, right? Because it's not like they're built for the ideal modern use, right? Like the Armory and the Richardson Station, that's not how you would build something for a modern use. It is the historic attractiveness of it. So if that's the whole, then, you know, you can historic that. But there are trade-offs, I mean, no doubt about it.
Could you just briefly talk about the historic, how, explain how the funding would work in this particular case? Is that the usual funding for actual, like you said, actual objects that are being done? So explain how, just be...
Right, so, so for the, in the case of 123 Pine and the Richardson Station, what we're looking to have is an allocation upfront, where we can say, developer, if you're interested in this, let's make a deal for this redevelopment. And once a developer is secure and a deal is signed, then the CPA funds can be assigned to them once the development is complete, so that it will reverse it. So there are other programs that act similar to that. For example, there's a Housing Development Incentive Program that has, frankly, the smallest part of the incentive is tax evasion on the local level. What it allows is for the state to give a tax credit that can be monetized. So what does that mean? You get a $200,000 tax credit, you can either write it off if you have that amount of responsibility, or you can sell it to someone who has that tax appetite, right? So you get cash. That program was used most recently in the Cuban, in the downtown, where the Colonial Arts Institute is, and they got several hundred thousand dollars for that. So we would look to mimic that without the state resource. We're trying to mimic it with a local resource, where we say, okay, and at the end of the project, you get this $150,000. So a developer can plan that in their financial pro forma sheet that says, okay, this is how I'm gonna cover my costs, what do you do with $150,000 in purchase? For the Armory, it's not for bricks and mortar, it's for the redevelopment that goes into it. So, you know, when you're drawing up your plans, when you're doing your market study to make sure that you can actually fill the units, you know, that's where it's vulnerable. $150,000 each. And I'll even add, I don't know if legally the CPA committee would do this, but part of our desire is to actually have one allocation, not three allocations of $150, we put in three different applications. But what that does is if we can allocate $150 to either of the three, it reduces the risk of just holding money without a taker, right? Because whatever is the first project that we can get done, we could move forward. So that's another possibility. Any other questions?
I just have one question. I'm just wondering, I think I have a lot of voice, it'll be okay. When you say no harm, no foul, like, I am a little bit confused. I understand that if you're not gonna use the funds, you're willing to give it back to the committee. But if the committee is charged with spending dollars on an annual basis, tell me how, like, the other applicants in the room who are applying for this money, I mean, there's only one clause, it's a limited amount of funding, obviously. We're dedicating a certain portion of the funding to go to a potential project. If you don't use it, it goes back into the fund, but the current applicants are, that money is no longer accessible. The current applicants have become available for future applicants, is that what you're saying?
For future rounds.
For future rounds, okay.
So the CPA committee doesn't have to allocate funds every year?
Right.
So it would be the same, it would be the same as the CPA committee deciding to hold money?
Yeah, I just posted.
So a similar scenario, right? Would be the CPA committee saying, these are worthy projects, we know that we're not gonna allocate into it, right? And so that is one market signal that can be provided. What this does is, and remember, when I apply, I have no idea who else is applying. So I can only let the CPA committee make, you know, make the decision. Ideally, I come in, oh, no one else is applying, okay, so I get three awards of $170,000. So I can only put in the applications for the things that I know are important to historic commission and other priorities. So what we try to do with this is advance the conversation in that the most ready I can be to react to the good opportunity that we can land, that's in the best interest of redeveloping these properties. So of course, as I said, there are trade-offs with cost. There's also trade-offs that I'm sure the CPA committee is gonna have to wrestle with. We like this, but, you know, we would have to wait, we wanna fund that. And that's your hard job.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Hey, well, thank you, everybody. This has been very helpful to us as well, the committee as well. But I hope it's also been helpful to the public, and this has been recorded, so it's gonna be, you know, 15.
Yes.
The government's, and you know, and when it might, and will this be? Holyoke Media.
On YouTube.
On YouTube. You can also watch it on there. So I hope that, I'm gonna try to get that word out so people, you know, the public, they can come out tonight with the weather maybe, but they can watch this. Because it'll be very informative to them, and maybe they can get back to us on our website or through Amy, if they have anything, search or questions or anything else. So, I thank you, yes.
Just a quick question, is there opportunities for people to vote on projects? Or is it strictly up to your committee?
It's strictly up to our committee, but we are only gonna make recommendations. The final decision is with the city council. The city council makes the final decisions, whether to propose our recommendations to them, and then they're gonna make the decision, so. What's that?
Any input from the...
Yeah, any input from the public is at best, we need that. And especially for the city council, too, to know, so. But that, we'll let you know when it's going to be done, the city council will let the public know that. So, okay, Amy, you have something to add?
Two things. First of all, you don't, well, I think I have the microphone here. But if you are, although the public does not have a formal vote, you could write to us, you could talk to us, we would be very interested in the public's impressions and ranking of any of these projects. If you want that input, we will take it into consideration. And anybody who's listening, I hope you tell us what you want to see from us. And the other thing is just a suggestion, if this is going to be up on Holyoke Media, perhaps Nifa could supply the video we didn't see to Holyoke Media, and we can append it to the presentation in order to see it that way.
I just noticed that Linda Bacon, one of our city councils, is here tonight from Board by. Thank you, Linda, for being here. And so I guess that's it. Thank you all for being here tonight, we really appreciate it.
Thanks for doing it.